Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you all to Albany City Council Work Session Monday, February 24th at 4:00 P. M. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Thompson?
Here.
Counselor Monague?
Here.
Counselor McLeod?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor McGee?
Present.
Counselor Newton Azor?
Present.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. So next is Business from the Public. Does anyone sign up to speak? Business from the public is the public's time for Albany residents to speak and to counselors to refer to us to listen. The council will discuss topics, will not discuss topics, and make decisions during the Business from the Public, but will take comments and requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council rules and observe the same standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When arriving at the microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in Albany. I cannot read this. Ron Lucas? Mr. Lucas? Thank you.
Just start talking.
Start, state your name and state whether or not you live in Albany.
Ron Lucas, 38, 93.
No address.
Oh.
Just say you live in Albany.
Okay.
Three minutes, please.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
I'm here about the easement beside my home. I bought the house. We've lived there 28 years, and I lived there a year by myself, and we've never had any trouble there whatsoever because of the easement. Now, if this were to be given, the land given back to the individual homeowners, there's eight homeowners that would face tremendous expense having fences built between us and then having to close it off. Also, it is important, I don't know if it's a law or city, ordinance that every 600 feet there'd be passageway for the people to get from one street to another. Now, the one drawback now is on the north side, the north end of our property is kind of a ditch you would have to walk through if you were going to the store, which is kinda, it's not real safe. But I just don't think the easement should be taken away. And I understand that the city doesn't have the personnel to come out and cut the grass. And I've been doing it, and now my new neighbor does it. And so I don't think that's an argument for fencing it off.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Next tonight is Jesse Courtney.
Hello. I am Jesse Courtney. I am a resident of the Albany area. I've lived at, oh, yeah. I've lived at the address on file of three, I'm sorry. I've lived at that address for my whole life, the full 28 years of my life, and the alleyway has always been closed for a reason. Helps protect us. The maintenance that I know my neighbors have done to keep the area up has been strenuous. I've seen that grass three feet high, and nobody from the city has came to mow it before when it was open. Second off, we noticed a very high rate of crime up here once the alleyway was open to the public, and there's no need for the access, the alleyway to be open. In my understanding, an alleyway to Dairy Mart is not smart, doesn't help anybody. And it keeps us safe. I mean, people walking through your backyard isn't really the safest environment. Even I know my kid is now a year and a half, and honestly, if the access road or alleyway, whatever you want to call it, is opened up again, we will very likely be considering moving out of Albany. Ridiculous. I mean, my mother paid over $85,000 back in 1990 to have that section closed off for a reason because she saw that it was going to be an issue in the future. Luckily, we were closed up, been closed up again since I was born. I don't see need for it to be open. Makes no sense.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is a presentation by Arquita Foundation. Nanette?
Excuse me? Are you gonna make?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. If there's anybody in chambers that'd like to speak to council for three minutes, please feel free to do so. State your name and whether or not you live in Albany.
Tom Cordier. I live in North Albany. Tonight, I guess there are going to be a discussion about, as I read Hassel's blog, about the street fees and maybe a gas fee. And I've never heard of a public, a meeting of the, of the city council to talk about lowering the cost of government. The only time money gets brought up is when the city wants more money. Never a discussion in the public about how to reduce costs. So my question is, how many head count numbers, how many employees are going to be terminated to reduce the cost of city government? I've heard for years, whenever I propose that, the answer is always, oh, if we do that, we'll have to cut our services. And that on its face is not true. Because that makes the assumption that every employee is busy 100% of the time, and you and I know that's not true. So that's a falsehood that's perpetrated on the public that you cannot reduce services. And I think that you owe it to the public to invite the public in, along with the financial people, to talk about how to reduce the cost of government. Because just raising it every time somebody wants to raise it or comes up with another bright idea to get more money, that tells me the city staff is focused on getting more money. And the city staff is the one that develops the budget, and then it comes in front of a panel with some public input, but the die is already cast. And so the input given by the public isn't, isn't recognized, isn't legitimized. And so you have the ability to reduce the cost of city government, but it's obvious to me that you don't have an interest in doing that. Otherwise, you would invite the public in to talk about how to do that and express a willingness to do that. So thank you for listening to me. I hope I wasn't obnoxious in any way, because this is an important issue. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is a presentation by Arquita Foundation. Nanette Sasseronis?
That's great.
Page two through 13 in your packet.
Good afternoon. I am Nanette Sasseronis, the founder and president of Arquita Foundation. This is Amita Larson, the development director. We want to thank the mayor for asking us to present about our nonprofit here today. Arquita Foundation is an empowerment-based self-defense program for women and girls. From statistics, we know that empowerment-based self-defense reduces violence by 50%. One of the studies that I focused on was a study that was published in 2019 in a women's psychology journal, and they had a really big group of study. It was over 600 women. Half the women had had empowerment-based self-defense the year previous and half had not. That year after the class, those women and girls that had taken an empowerment-based self-defense class had 52% less cases of violence against them. That is a impressive statistic, and I just want you to imagine for a moment a world where every girl and every woman has the skills to stay safe. This next slide, the statistics are terrible, but again, they're reported statistics, so we know they're very under-valued. The numbers are much higher than what is reported. As a survivor myself, I never called the police. I never called the hotline. And so I want you to just focus on the statistic that every five hours, a woman is killed by her intimate partner. That is equivalent to a 737 being about three-fourths full going down every month. If that was happening, people would be outraged. People would be saying, let's do something. We must make this safer. We must make flying safer. But it's an ugly statistic that we don't want to talk about. But if we don't talk about it, we cannot create change. So it's important that we talk about the things that are unpleasant to make this world safer and better for all of us. So our mission at Arquita Foundation is to increase girls' awareness, confidence, and safety by empowering them with situational awareness, boundary setting, emotional, psychological safety, and verbal and physical self-defense skills. Our vision, of course, is that we want every woman and girl to have these skills to protect themselves. So one of the main parts of my training was working as a volunteer for over five years with Portland City Women's Strength Program. I was very impressed during the training period that I realized that if I had had empowerment-based self-defense when I was a teenager, my life would have looked completely different, and it would have looked different every decade. So it's just really, we're very passionate at Arquita Foundation to provide all women and girls with the skills to defend themselves. A brief overview of our training, our seven-hour workshop, this workshop can be taught in a one session, it can be taught in two sessions or three sessions. And so what our workshop will cover is situational awareness. It's really important how we present ourselves when we're out in public. It's important that we appear alert and confident, and we role-play these situations. We talk about intuition and bias. Intuition is so important. That is our God-given alarm system. It's there to protect us, but many of us don't listen to it. One of the main reasons we don't listen to our intuition is because we're afraid of making a scene. We're worried about being polite, and so we don't follow through those instincts. And of course, when it comes to intuition, following those instincts is following them without knowing the reason why. But we have that feeling, and it's so we talk a lot about intuition because that is a first line of defense for all, for all of us. We spend time role-playing boundary setting. It's really important. Boundary settings, we use in all of our relationships in life and how to comfortably set a boundary so that we feel respected and we respect other people as well. We do a brief discussion on de-escalation techniques. We focus on verbal self-defense. It's really important to believe that safety does not require politeness. So when it comes to our safety, it's great to be assertive. That's what we want. And we want to be bold and confident in who we are. Physical self-defense, in the seven-hour workshop, we do hand strike, kicks, elbow strikes, we do floor work, we do strangulation defense. We talk about domestic violence. There is so much more to domestic violence than a black eye, and so talking about the various ways that domestic violence plays out is important. It's important to understand how to support a woman who is currently living in domestic violence. Many of us on our own might say the wrong thing. It's very important that a woman leaves when she's ready to leave. And as we know, the most dangerous time for a woman is before she leaves, when she's leaving, and right after she leaves. And so we discuss that. Then we talk about trafficking in America. There's a lot of myths out there about trafficking, and it's important that we know the reality of trafficking in America. We discuss fight, flight, freeze, and fawn. For me, as a survivor, it's very important that women understand the freeze component. Many of us, in any situation, will freeze, and that is a common thing that happens. But it's important to understand that if you froze and you didn't fight back, it was still an assault. It still was not your fault. And to understand that is really powerful for a lot of survivors. And then, of course, we talk about passive, assertive, and aggressive communication and behavior, and it's important to know our goal at Arquita is, of course, that we are assertive. That is our goal, to be assertive. And so that's a brief overview of our, of our seven-hour class. Our three-hour safety workshop is very powerful as well. Currently, we're teaching that the second Saturday at the YMCA. We're going to cover the same things, the things that will prevent from, the violence from happening. We're, we're talking about the situational awareness, intuition, and bias, understanding our boundaries, respecting other people's boundaries, again, verbal self-defense, basic physical self-defense. This workshop doesn't have the floor work and the elbow strikes as much. It has minimal contact. It's still very powerful. And then we do breathing techniques. Why is breathing important, do you ask? It's important because how we breathe actually affects the decisions we make. And also, in a crisis situation, there are techniques you can do to think clearer, and we want everyone to have those skills. And of course, it reduces anxiety in general, so it's important to talk people through that as well. This is a testimonial from a mother who took the class with her daughter. I'll just read that. "I don't think there are words to express how amazing your classes are. You may have noticed that I broke down in one of your classes. It was the ground defense day. I didn't expect to be so emotional that day. There were some experiences in my youth that resurfaced, and I wished I had the knowledge that I had gained from your class back then. I was also overwhelmed by the emotion that my daughter now has the knowledge and strength to protect herself as well. I was so proud of her for trying the ground defenses. Mixed emotions, but a proud mama for sure. I also appreciated all the instructors' compassion during all the sessions. You can tell that you care tremendously about this program, Ariana." And this testimony from Ariana was just so powerful to me, and that is why we do the things that we do for this nonprofit. One of the main things in self-defense is beginning with the belief that you are worth defending. When I was an 18-year-old girl, that was my first experience as an adult with domestic violence. And when I was curled up on the ground taking the kicks, I did not have a skill in the world to defend myself. And the truth is, if I had had the physical skills to defend myself, I did not have the emotional or the mental skills to, to use those skills. So safety really is priceless, and how you can help us with Arquita Foundation, we need your help to bring this program to our community. This could include funding to help cover instructors' fees, equipments, and material. It could be championing the importance of empowerment, empowerment-based self-defense within our community, and of course, any connections to key decision-makers in our community. And you can check our website out at arquita.org, and you can contact us anytime at contact@arquita.org. Thank you very much for your time.
Counsel? Any questions or comments? Counselor Monague?
First off, I just want to say thank you for what you're doing. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I really wish we didn't need to have this in our society. I think it's unfortunate that, as a society, we put the ownership on women and girls to keep themselves safe instead of holding men accountable for the violence that they do onto us. So thank you for your work, and again, I really wish that was something we didn't need.
Well, we appreciate you commenting, and, and we are, we just really want to make the world safer, and it takes all of us. It really takes a community to reach that goal. Thank you very much.
Do the council have any? Counselor McGee and the council.
How did you come up with the name Arquita?
Oh, thank you for asking. So my last name, Sasseronis, is a family name. It's from Greek, Greece, and so I knew I was going to start a nonprofit years ago after I got out of a domestic violence situation that lasted a very long time, and I was, I never felt like I was enough. And so I Googled what was enough in Greek, the Greek language, and Arquita means enough. And in Arquita, we believe every woman is enough.
Counselor McLeod?
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Can you tell me?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Can you tell me, do you work with, I, I know you, you said you work with the YMCA. Do you work with other local girls organizations? I'm thinking of one downtown. And do you, do you offer scholarships or other programs for individuals that might not otherwise be able to afford the classes?
Yes, of course. So we have partnered last year, at the end of last year, we partnered actually with the Jackson Street Homeless Youth Shelter, and we taught our first class to them in January, and that class was more like the three-hour workshop, and we taught boys and girls together. And so that was very powerful. We also have partnered with Young Groups of Oregon, and we're going to be teaching our seven-hour course to them. We will be teaching at the library in April, and at Arquita, we want every woman to be able to have the class. So if it's not taught free, then anyone can send an email to contact@arquita.org, and they can take a class at no charge. Because I don't want money to ever be a problem for anyone taking the class. So there is always scholarships, and that's why we need funding, because most of our students need scholarships.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Azor? I'm, I'm happy you came. Thank you for accepting my invitation. I'm a father of a daughter and I have seven, eight, eight nieces and one granddaughter. And so I really appreciate something like this being available for other young women in our city and wives, and women doing, experiencing domestic violence. And so I greatly appreciate your honesty and the work that you're doing, and I do pass the flyers out you gave me, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Definitely be in touch.
Well, thank you very much. Have a lovely afternoon.
Thank you. Next presentation is Albany Public Library Foundation. Richard Engelmann? Is informational?
Yes, my name is Richard Engelmann. I live in the Montith district, and I'm here to talk to you about a foundation that may or may not be familiar to you. We are rather quiet. The, I'm the board president of the Albany Public Library Foundation, and that is a group that helps to underwrite our very fine public library. The foundation came about in 1992, not only to support library services, but also specifically to support the continued usefulness of the Carnegie branch and its historic building. The organization's founding was in response to threats to close the Carnegie branch. The foundation has an endowment, which has, over the years, supported a number of projects at the Carnegie, including repair of the openable windows, adding screens to the windows, adding air conditioning, improving the heating system, refreshing landscape, painting the front steps, and most recently, repairing the wind-up clock that sits or hangs on the wall next to the bust of Shakespeare. Those items have been looking over the main reference desk since the library opened more than a century ago. In the past few years, as the city ceased supplying funds for library acquisitions, that's buying books, subscribing to databases and periodicals, the foundation has made substantial annual donations for that purpose. While funding acquisitions does not directly support the Carnegie branch, without those funds, the library system as a whole would suffer, and that certainly would affect the Carnegie branch as well. So we want the council and the public to be aware that the public, Albany Public Library Foundation is, as one of my board members said, an organization that does not come here to ask you for money, but one that comes here to give you money for the greater good, and we're very proud to be able to do so. Looking forward, the foundation is concerned that the Carnegie branch needs to be made physically accessible to all library, Albany citizens. Providing an elevator to reach both floors from ground level, improving and improving the restrooms would make the Carnegie able to host exhibits, talks, and other events, as well as making the building safer for staff and patrons. as well as making the building safer for staff and patrons. I hate it when I see them carrying boxes of books up the front steps on a rainy day. The city needs to think about this project, which we think is eminently doable with help from the foundation and of grants and assistance from other organizations. But if we get anything going, we're going to need some help from the council too, to support such an endeavor. So, I thank you very much for hearing me out on what the foundation does. We do have a website. We're on Facebook. And if you go to our website, you can take a look at some of our later projects. And if you want, you can give us money, so we can keep giving it back to you. Thank you very much, and I'm glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, thank you very much, sir. Any questions or comments? Counselor Newton Azar?
I'm looking forward to attending the fundraising event next month. So, I wish, do you want to give a quick plug for everyone that might be listening?
On what, Library Uncorked?
Yes.
Yes. We also contribute to funding Library Uncorked, so that friends of a library can raise money to help the library as well. There are three nonprofit organizations that all contribute substantially to keep our library going. And I must say, I've only lived in Albany for eight years, but this town, this city, has an excellent public library, and I'm very glad for that.
Thank you. And counselors, anyone else? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, not so much. Just thank you. Thank you for all you do. And I know some of the foundation board members, and I love, this will be a recurring theme. I love folks, I keep saying this, who turn off their computer and go and do things for the community. And like you said, do things beyond the Carnegie library, which is a key part of our historic downtown, the library itself, the entire system. You help out. So, just thanks. Thank you.
I didn't hear a date on Library Uncorked. What day is that, time and where?
You know, I don't know offhand.
It's on my calendar.
It's the first Thursday of March.
March 8th.
March 8th.
There we go. I just figured, since we were plugging it.
Let me, let me.
It's March 1st.
March 1st.
At the main library.
At the main library.
I believe it's 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. Okay.
And the tickets are available at both libraries and also online.
And it's 5:30 PM. I apologize. I just Googled it.
So, thank you very much, sir. Any other comments? Please, Counselor McLeod. I almost said your first name.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that as a child, the public library was always my safe space to go, to learn, to learn the facts, to know what the truth is. And I just wanted to thank you for the work that you do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next on tonight's agenda, item five is Timberland Edition Mid Block Walkway. Engineer Aaron Hemstra, pages 421 in your packet.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'm here, I'm Aaron Hemstra, Engineering Manager at Public Works. I'm here to discuss the Timberland Mid Block Right-of-Way. So, this right-of-way was created with the original subdivision as right-of-way. It's not an easement, so it wouldn't show up on homeowners' title reports or anything like that. So, it's right-of-way that was created with the subdivision. Some background on that is that the Public Works decided we did not want a new street connection at the intersection there. And so, due to the block length standards and the distance, the right-of-way was dedicated for pedestrian access to Knox Butte. I think it was like 600 feet or so is the block length standard. This would have been a residential street connecting into Clover Ridge and Knox Butte. So, you would have had two major streets and then a small residential collecting into it. So, it wasn't ideal for an intersection there. So, that's why they went with the pedestrian connection. Looking into this, it seemed like the developer ran out of money. So, that's why this wasn't paved. I was called out on the original plans, but it was still a connection up towards the Dairy After we started this September or so, when residents came to council, we started receiving feedback from other residents in the neighborhood. And it's been kind of a 50-50 split on those who are wanting the vacation versus those that are looking to keep it open. It seems like there's quite a bit of people that go through there from this 80 or so lot subdivision. And so, at this time, staff does not recommend council initiating a vacation of the full right-of-way. There's three blocks worth, or restricting it just due to the heavy public access that uses it. Questions?
So, who initiated this?
We've had people coming to, I think Counselor Smith talked with several residents. Several residents came to city council as well and has reached out to various council members as well. I believe Counselor McLeod recently had a resident reach out to her as well. So, it's been kind of back and forth between people for and against that have kind of been reaching out to us.
Thank you. Counselor Monague?
So, what I think I saw in the packet, this follows our kind of guidelines for block length. If the block length is too long, then our standard is that we have some sort of easement between. Is that correct?
Correct. And in this case, it's not an easement, it's full right-of-way.
Right-of-way. But that's in our, like, standards and code, right?
Yes, and it's been in there for a while.
Okay. So, if we were to close that off, that would go kind of against what our standards are, which we can do at times, but it would go against the standard, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that was clear.
Counselor McLeod?
Thank you. I did just want to declare that I, seeing this on the agenda, I went and spoke with some of the residents at the Timberland Right-of-Way area yesterday. I did speak with the two residents that spoke during Business From the Public today. I spoke with them yesterday, as well as a couple of other residents. I did observe three pieces of fencing that were blocking the public right-of-way. Two sections of fencing did appear to be very recently installed. The third appeared to be very old. And I did observe the ditch on Knox Butte Road that does appear to be a trip hazard for pedestrians. One of the residents that I spoke with, who is not here today, did indicate to me that he would like to see that area paved, as well as a sidewalk installed on Knox Butte and a crosswalk from the right-of-way towards Dairy Mart. And that may be a little more safe in the future. It seemed that most of the people I spoke with wanted the right-of-way closed, and they had neighbors that had already taken that upon themselves. So, it is blocked in some areas, and I wasn't sure if staff was aware of that. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention. But I am really torn on this issue, because I understand the public safety concerns with the residents that are seeing vandalism and other acts against their property. And I do also understand the city's need to have a more walkable neighborhood. So, I am very torn on this, and I would like to see a public hearing, if possible, on this.
Any other counselors have anything?
May I respond real quick?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, we are aware of the blocking of the alley. So, Christian Dell with APD has been out there for code compliance because of these, because we have received complaints about the right-of-way being blocked. So, that kind of started a little bit before, I think it was National Night Out, when Counselor Smith was out there. So, APD has gone out there and has directed people to remove the barriers.
Mr. Hemstra said much of what I was going to say. So, yes, this came to my attention in August, when I was doing rounds on National Night Out with Officer Shandell. He told me that he had spoken to a number of residents, most of them on Lynn Avenue, before that, and they were anxious to talk to me when I was in the neighborhood that night. So, I spoke to five or six different homeowners along that area, brought it back and spoke to staff about it later. And staff has been working with Officer Shandell since then. And we're doing that before, I believe, to try to come to some kind of a conclusion. A public meeting of some kind would be possible if someone turns in an application requesting the vacation of the easement. Is that correct? That could be, the city could do it, or the residents could do that. And I believe it's most appropriate for the residents to do that, especially if there's such a split. It would, I would be interested in hearing from both sides. I have only heard from the people that I spoke to in August.
Counselor Monague?
Well, now I have a question, because Counselor McLeod brought it up. But can we, if that did happen, if there was a vacancy filed, I would recommend, and I would be curious to know, if we do plan, if in our master plan, we do plan on having a sidewalk there and/or crosswalk right there? And like, how far out do we think that kind of, I know there's so many unknowns on funding right now, but that would be interesting information to have if we should, if we end up having a public meeting on that?
It is currently in our TSP right now for Knox Butte to be improved sidewalks and everything. There are several restraints due to, we don't have enough right-of-way, and that section of road is currently in the county jurisdiction.
And I thought that we were looking at maybe one of the rapid flashing crosswalks around that area, but I don't know if it was close to that.
We did. That's one of the preferred locations. But again, it would be a costly project. It wouldn't just be construction of the rapid, well, we call them blinky lights. You would also have to construct ADA ramps, and so it ends up being over $100,000 when you add all the improvements.
Counselor Smith?
The crosswalk that you referenced earlier, we've had a request for one at, what is it? It's not Onyx, but is it Opal Court that goes to Knox Butte RV Park at that intersection? It's further west, towards, right across from Cascade Grill.
Yep, that's correct.
And I would add that if we did like the blinky lights, as Stacy put it, they would be temporary, because that intersection does call for a full traffic signal. So, this would only be temporary, and then everything would have to be taken out and replaced.
Isn't that kind of close to people flying around, coming underneath the bridge? And people fly through there? Right? Because I've seen accidents there. I was almost hit there, because sentry does not line up properly with that or the, so it's very dangerous, in my estimation. Putting a crosswalk there would be dangerous.
Do we have an estimate on when any of those improvements possibly could take place?
They are out, I can tell you they're outside the five-year planning window of the CIP, and would typically be made when we improve Knox Butte Road and constructed it to a city standard. And so, it is a ways out.
Is there any closer guesstimate you can make, other than more than five years?
It's, I mean, probably within the next 20 years. It's, I mean, it's a ways out.
Thank you.
Do we know, I know we had a few folks email us and say that there were, you know, their mailboxes were destroyed, or there was vandalism. And while those aren't relating to the alleyway, personally, I believe public access is public access. I'm just curious if we had any police reports, or if we know if there's any uptick in crime in that area.
When I reached out to Christian Dell, he did not say that this area had any higher calls because of the access there.
Okay. Because I was gonna say, my son's daycare is in that area, and I'm there every day, every Monday through Friday. And it seems like a fairly sleepy, safe area. So, I wasn't sure if there were, you know, things filed, or what was going on.
I was just gonna say, I live over there. I think it's pretty safe.
Yeah.
It doesn't really, but we could use some lighting over there, which I've said several times, because it is dark. And I have said that several times about it's not well-lit over there at all. That's dangerous, seeing people walk with reflectors on. Sometimes you can't see them until you are up on them. That I do know is a serious concern, and that's been said several times.
One thing I'm curious about, do we know if, since local residents are maintaining the pathways, and they're saying they can get up to three feet high, is that something that, you know, our Parks from Rec is able to mow down if we have a large mower that can fit through there? Or do we know if there's an HOA in this neighborhood that should be maintaining that as well? Oh, HOA is the other side?
Yeah, since it's right-of-way, it typically would be our Streets Department. And the way the municipal code's written, it's the adjacent property owners.
Responsible.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, there's an alleyway behind my house, and we all pitch in for gravel for that area. So.
Sounds about right. Anything else, any other questions? This is in Ward Three, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank you, counselors from Ward Three. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Next on tonight's agenda is schedule and overview to develop funding options for street maintenance utility fee. Stacy Balcastro is back up on the dais up with us.
All right, just give me a moment. I'm gonna get my presentation on the screen. Close your eyes. I'm going to the start of the presentation. Sorry, you gotta.
Oh, no worries.
You can read really fast. You saw the whole thing.
That's Marilyn. Counselor Smith?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. So, staff initiated a series of discussions with council over a year and a half ago. It was in August of 2023. The purpose of this series of discussions was to talk about Albany's streets, their condition, and trying to find funding to maintain Albany's streets to an ex- and trying to find funding to maintain Albany's streets to an acceptable level of service. This goal aligns with objectives that are in Albany's adopted strategic plan. So, identifying adequate funding to maintain the pavements in Albany, it's an issue that we have been grappling with going back to at least 1982. That is the first time that we had a local gas tax on the ballot that failed. This isn't a unique issue to Albany. All communities in Oregon are grappling with this issue from the city level on up to the state. I attended the Oregon Asphalt Pavement Association Conference recently with some of my coworkers. ODOT spoke at the conference, and one statistic that they shared that really resonated is, since 2017, their cost to maintain pavements for construction has gone up 88%. And the issue is that while construction costs have increased, funding that agencies have in Oregon has stayed relatively flat. And that's why we have this issue. Okay. So, at the conclusion of the series of discussions that we initiated in August, council's support for additional funding mechanisms was mixed. Council did adopt a ordinance that created a chapter in Albany's municipal code that provides the legal authority to set a street maintenance fee. Council also asked staff to do more work and research on a local gas tax, and then also on general obligation bonds. All of this information from the past presentations can be found online. And then, there's also other really good information on Albany's streets. And I just wanted to point that out in case people want to go back and read. They go back to 2016.
Could you please send us that link, or have the clerk send us that link?
Sure, absolutely. And then, I also want to point out that the staff memo also include attachment one. And that memo summarized the presentations that we initiated back in August. And then, we also tried to note any time council provided direction at those meetings. So, today's presentation, we're going to provide a review of foundational information from the series of presentations that were initiated in August. We're going to review the three funding recommendations. And then, we're going to discuss next steps. Like, what are we going to, what have we done? And like, what are we planning to do? We want to discuss with council. There will be time for questions, comments at the conclusion of the presentation. But I really welcome questions and comments throughout, if you have any. I may lose my place, but I can get back on track. So, if you do have questions, feel free to interrupt. So, staff's first presentation covered information included in the pavement 101 white paper. This is the primer that we use to discuss street classification, how we classify streets in Albany, pavement condition index, the current condition of Albany streets, the different methods that we use to rehabilitate pavements, and then also how we effective, what's the best way to effectively manage pavements, least cost? The city is responsible, excuse me, responsible for approximately 190 miles of streets. Their streets are classified in one of three categories that are determined based on traffic volume. So, what you see up here on the slide is Waverly Drive. Waverly Drive is an arterial street. Arterials have the highest traffic volume compared to other streets. They carry the majority of traffic that move through the city. Another example of an arterial street is Queen Avenue. Here you see Carey Still Drive. Carey Still Drive.
Excuse me for a second.
Sure.
Let's take a five-minute, 10-minute break. Sorry about this. One minute. Good evening. I'll now reconvene the meeting at 5:03 PM. Please go ahead and restart your process, and thank you all for your patience.
Thank you. So, here you have Carey Still Drive. Carey Still Drive is an example of a local street in Albany. Local streets have the lowest traffic volume. And unless you or someone you know lives on a local street, you may not even know that it exists in Albany. And then, falling in between arterial and local streets is the Collector. So, Collectors have high traffic volume. They channel traffic in between local and arterial streets. An example of a street with the Collector Street classification in Albany is Marion Street or Jackson Street. Street classification is important because many of the funding options we have available are restricted based on how a street is classified. So, on this slide, we have our pavement condition index. The city uses the pavement condition index methodology as the primary technique to evaluate streets. In Albany, we do this on a five-year basis. So, we will be completing another evaluation in fiscal year 2026. PCI, it's a numerical index, going from zero is when a street has completely failed, up to 100, when a street is brand-new. The Oregon Department of Transportation uses the Good, Fair, Poor Classification System, which is shown on this slide. The top picture is North Albany Road. North Albany Road is in good condition with a PCI of 90. The middle slide, picture shows 34th Avenue. 34th Avenue is in fair condition, it has a PCI of 65. And then, the bottom picture, in the poor condition, that's Del Rio Avenue, and it has a PCI of 34. And here we have 38th Avenue. 38th Avenue is a local street in Albany, and it has a PCI of four. So, it's almost completely failed. This table shows the percentage of streets in Albany by classification that fall in the Good, Fair, Poor category. What it shows is that for arterial and Collector streets, the majority of them are in good to fair condition. Local streets are different. When you look at local streets, almost 38% are in good condition, but then, an almost equal amount are in poor condition. The local streets in good condition include streets that have been constructed recently. They're going to be 10 to 20 years old. The local streets that are in poor condition, they're located in older neighborhoods. So, the condition of local streets, it's not a result of any targeted maintenance strategy. Really, there has been no strategy to maintain local streets because we don't have adequate funding. This curve is the pavement deterioration curve. It has been developed based on years of research. And what it shows is that generally, pavements stay in relatively good condition for the first part of their life, that's the flatter part of the curve. But then, when they reach a certain point, they're going to fail rapidly. The graphic also shows the Good, Fair condition. And then, to the right, it shows the treatment options that we use to rehabilitate pavements in Albany and their associated cost. You can see that the treatment options get more expensive as a pavement condition deteriorates. The cost to do a traditional reconstruction is going to be about five is going to be about five times the cost of a grind and overlay. A major point that was illustrated in the white paper is that the best financial strategy for effective pavement management is to keep the good roads good. This is contrary to what we typically hear from the public, is they want us to fix the worst first. So here's our pavement deterioration curve again. In this slide, we're illustrating effective pavement management. In this example, we complete minor repairs while the pavement is still in good to fair condition. So the blue curves showing that we do a crack seal, grind, and overlay. And every time we do these minor maintenance treatments, it resets the PCI and resets the pavement's condition. The worst-first strategy has shown that if you wait until the pavement's completely failed, following the black curve, and then it resets the pavement value. In this example, using the cost that we looked at on the previous slide, it cost approximately $300,000 to do the effective pavement management. If we wait until the pavement fails and use worst-first, then we're spending $1.4 million. So we have been using this effective pavement strategy on our arterials and collectors. You'll see this in our current capital improvement program. And then when we route the draft capital improvement program, you'll see this. There's a number of arterial and collector streets that are in the CIP. We're going to be doing overlays on them and grinding off the top two inches of asphalt and putting down new asphalt and resetting that PCI value. If we don't do the overlay within the planning window of the CIP, then we risk the streets completely failing and then having to do a more expensive street reconstruction. So during this series of presentations, I think almost unanimously, council reaffirmed the goal to maintain an average PCI for our arterials and collectors. But then, for the first time, council also said they would like to add a new level of service goal for local streets, to keep the local streets that are in fair to good condition at or above a PCI of 60. And then those local streets that have failed do work to start to increase the average PCI, so it's closer to 60. This is the first time that council has created a specific goal to address local street conditions, understanding that in order to successfully meet this goal, then we do need to find additional funding for street maintenance. Now let's talk about the money. The transportation fund receives revenue from four sources. The state gas taxes that we receive can only be spent to maintain the existing street system. And then we also receive federal gas tax. They're received through a program called the Surface Transportation Block Grant. These funds can only be spent to maintain arterial and collector streets, so they can't be spent to maintain our local streets. In 1999, the city started charging the water and sewer funds in lieu of franchise fee. And this is similar to the franchise fee that we charge garbage, power, and gas. And these fees do not have restrictions. The transportation fund also receives revenue from systems development charges. The improvement portion of the SDC charge, it can only be spent on growth-related projects that are in the transportation system plan. The reimbursement portion of the systems development charge, those fees are unrestricted, but it's a much smaller portion of the fee. I think we get maybe $180,000 annually, on average, from that portion of the fee. And currently, those fees are targeted towards making accessibility improvements in the right of way. Currently, we receive approximately $3.6 million of revenue in the Street Capital Fund annually. The Street Capital Fund is the fund where we pay for pavement preservation projects. We carry a reserve balance of approximately $500,000. This is for emergencies that can come up. It's less than what we carry in water and sewer. We carry a reserve balance in water and sewer of $1 million. We reduce the reserve amount in our Street Capital just to try to maximize the amount of projects that we can complete. And let's see. You don't see systems development charges on this table because, as discussed previously, for the most part, those are restricted to use on growth projects. And so, doing the math, currently, the five-year annual average is we are spending about $3 million on capital projects to rehabilitate our pavements.
Question?
The federal gas tax, is that coming in as expected? Or is that something that's been frozen or thrown away?
I'm glad you asked that.
Anytime I see the three-syllable F-word these days, I wonder.
Yeah, so the federal gas tax that we receive, it's through that Surface Transportation Block Grant. And Albany does have to compete with the other agencies that are in our urbanized area. And the other thing about those funds is they're available every three-year. So the amount that is shown on this table, $800,000, that's just an average. We may have funds for a project one fiscal year, and then we'll have two fiscal years where we won't have any funds. So it really does vary.
Thank you.
So even though the federal gas taxes are being collected here, we only get them every three years?
Correct, yep. And once Albany's population exceeded 50,000 people, we were required to form AMPO, the Albany area. Yes. And so the previous allocation Albany always received, that goes away, and now we have to compete with the other agencies that are part of the urbanized area.
Any other question? Council McLeod.
Thank you. I did have a question about the street ratings. Is there any data further dividing both the poor rating and the good rating into something unofficial, like a very poor rating or a very good rating? Say, more than 90% or less than 10%? Do we know how many or what percentage of our streets are in very good or very poor condition?
Yeah, we do. We have all that data in a software program called StreetSaver, where there's a van or a truck that drives every street in Albany. And we take pictures and are able to put the data in the software program and calculate the PCI. We use the ODOT Good, Fair, Poor because ODOT adopted it, and that's how we're able to apply for funding, and it's consistent with the state. But the PCI is a scale going from zero to 100, so...
But is there any way we can further break it down and have access to that information, so we have that data?
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
How can we get that?
We could put together a spreadsheet or a table that breaks it down, down further.
I'd be curious to see that just because you say that the majority of our streets are good or poor. I'd like to see how many are on either end of that scale.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is it going to take more than two hours to do that?
If Andrew Monaco was here, I could answer that question. I don't think it will. It's just manipulating a spreadsheet.
Because the reason I ask is, we talked about anything more than two hours needs a resolution. That's why I was asking.
Oh.
Any other questions for Stacy Bocastro? Are you not done yet? Okay.
No.
Go ahead and continue, please.
All right. So after talking about the funding available to maintain our streets, we talked about the funding gap. So based on the current street condition, this table summarizes by street classification the revenue that would be needed to maintain Albany's streets to a minimum PCI of 60. So the current average annual revenue is $3 million, and the funding gap needed to main streets to a minimum PCI equals $12.8 million across all of the classifications. You can see from the table that we are close to having the funding needed to maintain our arterials and collectors. But then, when it comes to the local streets, that's where the largest gap is. Now, we did use assumptions in order to calculate these numbers. The analysis was completed over a 40-year period. This recognizes that street maintenance and preservation is ongoing. All streets are going to be maintained to manage a target PCI of 60. The streets that are in poor condition are going to have to be reconstructed. We plugged in that arterials and collectors would get a grind and overlay every 20 years. And then the local streets in good and fair condition would get a grind and overlay every 40 years. And then the other thing that we would continue is the slurry seal program. All local streets would get a slurry seal applied to them every 20 years.
Yeah, that was a question. All of them?
All of them, even the ones that aren't really streets anymore?
Well...
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm kind of judgmental about... It's bad in my neighborhood and everywhere else.
You can put a slurry seal on a street with a really low PCI. It may not last.
But it might hold the pieces together for a little longer.
It may, yeah. And a lot of it depends on the weather.
Well, it's like putting blueberries in pancakes.
I do have a question. In my neighborhood, we have cement streets. Is there anything about the life of those? Because I know that there's a vehicle, the guy has two trucks, semis, tractor-trailers, that have damaged part of the road there right in front of his house. So what's the decay rate of those? Is that same timeline or a little different?
Chris Serkluski's in the back. He maybe would be able to answer that.
Because I know there's varying types of streets, right?
Yeah. The concrete...
All right. I thought maybe I was going to get away without having to talk. So I'm glad I was here. Good evening. So concrete and asphalt streets basically deteriorate differently. Concrete streets are rigid, so they're really hard. And generally, a concrete street will last longer. It costs a lot more to construct up front. And then, there really isn't anything you can do to a concrete street except completely replace it. So they have different maintenance strategies. So basically, you build a concrete street. You have to put a lot of effort into building it the right way up front. And then you can't do anything to it because the next thing to do to it is rip all of the pavement out and redo it over again. An asphalt pavement, you can grind off that top two inches and repave it. There's this intermediate step that you can keep doing to dramatically extend the life of the pavement. So there's benefits and downsides to both of them. But traditionally, the vast majority of our streets are made out of asphalt. The other problem with the concrete streets is if you have utilities under the street like we do, doing any kind of repair to the utilities or adding utilities under there becomes extremely expensive because that pavement costs a huge amount of money. And you can't really do like a trench patch in it like you would on asphalt. You have to replace entire panels of the concrete. And so you end up replacing half the road when you do like a waterline project or something.
And so our code does allow both types, correct?
It does. We have standards for both, but we rarely see any concrete pavement just because of the cost. It costs significantly more up front than an asphalt pavement.
I personally like to have it taken out of our code personally, but that's just me.
Well, I was going to say that there are places, like if you look at the south portion of Waverly Drive in Columbus, that was kind of built from scratch as a concrete road. There are very few utilities under the road. It's a really busy road that was built at great expense up front, doing everything exactly the right way, much to the protest of all the contractors, apparently, who bid on it, I was told. But that road is great. There's nothing wrong with it now. So that's kind of an isolated example. So I would never say never. But there are definitely trade-offs between those two pavement types.
Thank you. Any council, any other questions or go ahead and continue?
All right. Okay. So next, we're going to talk about what options are available to create additional revenue for street maintenance to try to start closing this funding gap. We discussed these options with council in December of 2023. The funding options basically fall into one of two categories. Either we shift existing resources or establish new resources. The existing resources to be shifted are really limited to the general fund because most of the other revenue that the city receives is restricted, used for a specific purpose. The general fund sources that could be shifted include property tax, franchise fees, or the city service fee. And this is where I put the danger, zero-sum game. The caution here is that any reallocation of general fund revenue has to be carefully evaluated because there would be impacts to programs and services, such as the library, parks, police, fire, that the city is currently offering. We also... So we talked about establishing new resources. And then the next slide further breaks this down into those that would be a discrete, one-time funding for typically a particular improvement or ongoing funding. So council support was mixed, but did land on support, asking staff to provide more information on one, discrete funding option, the general obligation bond, and then two funding options that would be ongoing, gas tax and street maintenance fee. So now let's talk about the three funding options. The street maintenance fee is an ongoing funding source. It's very common in Oregon. There's 27 cities in Oregon that have a street maintenance fee ranging from approximately $3 up to $16. The structure varies greatly between communities, from just having a simple, flat fee to having a very complex variable fee, where the fee can be determined by factors such as size or impact of a property. It does provide an opportunity for a low-income assistance program. The option does not require voter approval. And then, as you all know, council approved an ordinance to establish a street maintenance fee chapter in Albany's municipal code in September of last year. The code provided the legal authority to implement the fee. No fee has been determined to date. So the gas tax, a local gas tax, it requires voter approval. It would be an ongoing funding source.
Is that a...
It's an emergency alert. Tornado warning.
For real?
That's what it says. I don't know.
We talked about a tornado earlier today over in Lebanon. We're over there, yeah. I got a brand-new roof on my house. I better hold on. Oh, shit. I know, I'll get my... I'll find him.
Continue.
Should I continue? Okay.
Yes.
So a gas tax is very common. There's 32 cities in Oregon that have a gas tax ranging from $0.03 up to $0.10 in Portland. There's no option for a low-income assistance program with a gas tax, but it would capture vehicles that are passing through Albany using our roads who fuel up. So in Albany, well, local fuel taxes almost universally fail when there is no public education campaign. Those cities that had a robust outreach and education campaign, it's more common that they have success with the local gas tax.
Question is, what's the share? So 50 goes to state, 30 goes to county, or all that comes to us? The local gas tax, it comes all to us, correct?
It would, yeah. And for Albany, we looked at ODOT fuel sales and then also communities that have a gas tax that is similar to Albany. And like, very rough estimate is one penny would equate to approximately $400,000. And then the other thing I should note is with gas tax, there also is the concern that is a... It's sort of a declining revenue source. It seems like gas tax on the state level is flat or declining. The revenue isn't going up. Not just because of the EV vehicles we see, but because vehicles just are more fuel efficient, so there's less fuel being sold. All right, and the third funding option that council asked us to look at was the general obligation bond. General obligation bonds require voter approval. We have had one success with the GO bond back in 1998. A GO bond, it's a form of debt that the city would have to pay back. Typical periods are 10 to 20 years. And bonds are also used for major community... Major community-wide projects because they are voted on by the entire community. Which is why in the memo, we... Staff's recommendation is that... Well, we don't have a compelling list of arterial and collector streets at this moment. And so while it's a good option, and perhaps we could look at a package of local streets at this time, we would want to table it because we wouldn't want to... Our recommendation is not to put a bond and a gas tax on a ballot.
Same time.
Yeah. Okay, one thing all three funding options have in common is that to be successful, we really need to take the message and information that we've been having with council and the Transportation Advisory Commission out to the public so that they have the same understanding how street maintenance is funded and the need to identify additional funding if we are going to maintain our streets to an acceptable level. Staff is getting geared up to start a robust education and outreach effort. We have once again contracted with Conser, who will conduct opinion research to collect information on a local gas tax and street maintenance fee and then explore potential support for different funding scenarios that would involve both. Two in-person focus groups are scheduled during the first week of March. And they are also going to be completing a telephone survey of a representative sample of likely voters for future... To assess potential support for the gas tax and the street fee. Conser is also working with staff to create what we're calling a speakers bureau kit. And what this would be is materials that could be shared online or at meetings like with the Kiwanis or other local groups to talk about street maintenance. A contract with the consultant, Gialardi-Rossstein, was executed in December of last year. This is to support development of a street maintenance fee. Work under this contract includes evaluating GIS data and performing QA QC in the field to confirm customer class. I know that this work is already underway. There's, I think, over 1,000 commercial and industrial properties that they're verifying in the field. They're also going to be developing options for a fee structure that balances the city's funding goals with other considerations, including the billing system and data development, and then providing information on other communities' approaches to rate setting, including customer categories and trip generation, et cetera. All of this work will require numerous check-ins with council for direction. And we plan to follow the same meeting where we'll be checking in with council with follow-up reports to the Transportation Advisory Commission, which is a good segue to this next set of slides. So this is just a draft timeline that we put together. The next planned check-in would be at the April 7 council work session. Staff and Conser will present a summary of the results from the previous outreach efforts that were completed back in 2024 and then results from the focus groups that are scheduled in March. And then staff and Deb Gialardi will provide a summary of their work to develop the street maintenance fee. And then there'll be options and, I think, case studies for council to review and provide direction on. Starting in May, we plan to start the community-wide outreach and education effort. And then we also anticipate providing council another update on the final results of the public opinion research at the May 28 council meeting. And I believe that Deb Gialardi will also be attending that meeting to provide another update for the street maintenance fee. So if council's direction is to place a gas tax on the November ballot, then we would provide recommended ballot language at the July 7 work session for council to consider. And then a resolution to adopt the gas tax ballot would be at the July 9 council meeting. So I guess after the ballot title is filed, that's where we as staff, as public employees, it'll... Will be restricted on what we can do to... From campaigning to support the gas tax. I don't think the same restriction applies to council members or elected officials.
We would be the campaign team.
And then the November 4 is the election date. We will, of course, check in following the election. And so we would do that at the November 17 work session to discuss the results and next steps, depending on what happens. And then the... We also will continue to work on the street maintenance fee. And we did plug in dates for a recommended street maintenance fee amount at the December 8 work session and then a resolution to approve a street maintenance fee amount at the December 10 meeting.
For 2020?
Oh. Darn it. Time travel. The caveat is, is depending on how, you know, how the rate structure is put together, if it's... If there's a lot of... Like, if it's complex, we may need to push it into 2026. So it just depends on if it's... There's a simple way. Or if it becomes complex, then those two dates would possibly have to be pushed out. And that's the end of my presentation.
Counselors, do you have anything for Stacy?
I was curious about Senate Bill 687 and how we're watching. So Senate Bill 687, it provides that certain local governments may enact a fuel tax or vehicle registration fee without first submitting the proposed tax or registration fee to the electors. Have you guys been in contact or are you just watching this piece of legislation that's currently being discussed in this legislative session?
Can you repeat the number then?
Yeah, it's Senate Bill 687.
6387?
687.
And Stacy, I believe that what Councilor Newton Azor is referring to is the bill that would allow councils to pass gas taxes on their own volition rather than go to a vote.
Maybe we're going to proceed as normal as if this doesn't exist. And then if it does, handle it here. Just want to know if there were any plans for that as well.
Yeah, we were... We are proceeding as if it doesn't exist. We were aware of it. And I think that the... When's the legisla... When will the decision be in May, I think?
Yeah, May or June, I think.
May or June. So we would know prior to the July 7 and 9 date whether or not to proceed.
Sounds good.
Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I should have asked this earlier, but those numbers for street improvements in the various categories, was that just pavement? Or was it the full, like, bike lanes, sidewalks, street trees, the whole nine yards?
Yeah, it's inclusive of curb ramps, striping.
Okay.
Yep.
Great question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Counselor Montague?
Just a few comments for anyone who may be watching. I do encourage you to check out the street maintenance page on the city's website. It has all the information. If you do the math, which, you know, we've talked about this quite a bit, I think we're going to have to have all three, in my opinion. We're not going to get caught up by just having one or the other, or just one of these options. We are going to need to have all of them if we want to get our streets in a condition that isn't going to cost us a lot of money to get it out of that condition. So thank you so much for all the data that you guys have repeatedly told us. I appreciate that. Hopefully, people... This will help people understand the kind of hole we're in and what it's going to take to get us out of it.
Any other counsel have anything? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, this... She referenced the website and the work in the presentation you did today. It is... It does outline things well. But I just can't help but think we had an example of the issue we face, and that is Mr. Cordier, a great guy, you know, I know who he is, came here, gave us our opinion, gave his opinion, and he took off. And now, he may watch this later, I don't know. I don't know what he's up to. But we can talk all we want in this room about this, but unfortunately, it's no reflection of you guys. The community interprets things in a myriad of ways and a myriad of information. And that's really... That's on us. But it's not... I want to say I'm not... It's on us. It is on us ultimately. But it's more than us. I mean, either the community, and that is honest people acting in an honest way, whatever role. I mean, I'm not talking about people on the council. I'm talking about people involved in the public community. They need to step up with us when that time comes. These issues, no matter how... Whichever one we choose, or choose all three, it needs to be a widespread, a wide effort of the people who care about the community, you know, understand the problem and are more interested in solving the problem than, you know, pontificating. So that's all I have to say.
Counselor McGee?
I have a question. When you all do the focus groups and the telephones and the... How are you getting those people? And I'm only saying that because I've never gotten called for a focus group. I've never gotten a phone call to participate in any of these sorts of things. And if I'm not getting it and I live here, I'm just really concerned about who are you talking to?
I know that the consultant looks at voter rolls, I believe, and they try to get people community-wide, just in all the different demographics. They'll be able to explain that better than I will be able to when they report here at the April 7 meeting.
And by that time, they should have already gotten people already, or?
For the focus groups. And then the community-wide survey, I believe their goal is to reach 200 people. And they look at the data to try to get a representative of likely voters across the community.
Yeah, I just... I find that troubling that I just want to know where they're getting this qualitative data from. As a researcher myself, I don't... I'm not sure if they are hitting the marks that they should be. Because... And are they offering people incentives to participate in these focus groups?
Yes, yeah, that's something that was important, you know, to make it more accessible to everybody because they're working for the city, basically. The last focus groups we did, the people committed to about two hours. And so they are compensated and provided refreshments.
And is it always at the same space when we talk about accessibility? Is it in each ward? Is it always downtown? Is it at the YMCA? Is it at the college? Where are these people going to meet? Because if you're telling someone that it's always downtown and they don't necessarily have transportation to get there, then that's not accessible. So I'm just trying to see, are they in the community or are they just in the community?
The last one, I believe, was at, I can't remember what hotel, Off Knox Butte.
Offer Suites.
Yeah.
Because I had a few of my clients were in the last one.
Oh.
Perhaps it should be shifted around the community. Like, it should... I don't think it should be at the same place, in the same space, all the time. It should be in different spaces, different wards so that we can really capture the folks, the community voice.
Prostitution.
Yeah, because I'm not sure if... Like I said, I've never... And I'm a voter, okay? And I have never got a question, an email, a phone call, a smoke signal, a Morse code. I've got none of that. So I'm just making sure we're getting the people.
Yep, I will definitely... I'll provide them that feedback tomorrow.
Good. Any other counsel have anything?
Am I right? But didn't they provide their methodology during the last presentation too? Does that... Does anybody remember that? No, okay. I thought it was included in one of the packets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It probably was.
I feel like it was like their focus group. I feel like, no, they said it was like 20 people, and I was like, hmm.
Okay, so maybe the first one was smaller.
Their focus groups were rather, rather small. And that was rather disappointing to me.
Yeah, a bigger number. I am deeply concerned about that.
Okay.
And if we can just get more people to come out, however we can do that, I mean, you know, getting it out there, obviously through social media, talking to our citizens, but really getting... Because people will say, just like I said, I'd never heard of that. They never contacted me.
I actually do. I think I have in my notes somewhere, I think it was the focus groups. There were three focus groups. One was like 20 people, one was 17. They were not large focus groups at all. And so it would be nice to see that they... And I know it is hard to get people to show up, but this is their job and we're paying them to do a great job, to get a great cross-section of our community.
Yeah, they need to amp up their efforts, however that looks and feels. They need to do it.
Counsel, anything else? Thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation. Are these slides available to us?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you very much. Next is business from the council. I'm going to start with Counselor Montague. I can't hear you.
I had a thing. Oh, okay. So I just wanted to let the council know that three of our transportation projects were not funded in the 2025 to 2027 stiff discretionary and statewide transit network fund programs. We submitted three projects. One for a electric bus purchase. One was for transit stop improvements of phase two of that. And then... of phase two of that, and then the last one was upgrades to the transit operations facility. So unfortunately, we were not chosen out of all the projects that were submitted. I just want to let you guys know that.
Thank you. Next is Counselor McLeod.
Just that, it is Girl Scout cookie season, and I'm looking forward to volunteering with my daughter's Girl Scout troop. And thank you, sir, for your purchase from my daughter Ellie. Yeah, buy some Girl Scout cookies. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, you know, I've been thinking over the weekend, from our last meeting, we got a book on the Strong Towns book, and I haven't read it all, I've gone through some of it. But my, my question is, are we, are we going to discuss that in any way? I have, I have critiques of it, you know, not, not thoroughly, and I could probably come up with some more, but, but that's not, I think it'd be good to engage in that, that concept, that area. I think it'd be good, you know, it's not, you know, it's, it is what it is, and I think, I think we'd benefit from some cross-discussion about it.
If it's, if it's the council's will to do that, we can set something up. I distributed it to you as just general professional reading, and we had not planned on a special session to cover that, but if it is your general intent or desire to do that, we can certainly set something up.
All I'll say is I'm, I have some thoughts counter, counter to it, and I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Is that it? Counselor Newton Azor?
So I actually, I was out sick. Can I get my copy of that book? And I would love a book club. I, I think it'd be fun. What better, I don't know what the book is. I haven't read it. Sounds like fun to...
As long as it's between March 31st and July 1st, I'll read all the damn books you want me to.
Sounds great, yeah. Especially why not talk about more wonky things like than what we love to do here on the dais together? I think it'd be great. Other than that, just paying attention to a lot of things happening right now in the legislature and how they're going to impact us here in our community. Other than that, staying healthy.
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
I will wait till Wednesday.
Okay, Counselor McGee?
Three things, I think three things. Saturday morning, Alex and I attended the Untold Stories of Albany, combination of, you know, just like Black history in Albany. It was Really Awesome by the Oregon Black Pioneers, and someone from the ABA was there taking photos. It was brought to us by Ken Cultivate, which is a nonprofit organization here. In the fall, they did a walking tour, and then they put that walking tour into a presentation and brought it back to the library, and it was really, really good. Ken Cultivate, they provided breakfast and refreshments and discussion and photos and books and freebies, and it was just a really awesome program. So if you did not get a chance to see it, you could follow my little recap on Facebook, the little thing there. Other thing is I attended the Lynn Ben NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner in Corvallis on Saturday nights. Really interesting, the speaker was awesome. The theme was persistence is power, and I think that rings true in every space that we are in currently. And got a call from Janelle Bynum on Sunday, Sunday, asking what's going on here, what are we hearing, what are folks talking about, and how could she help, and how ways she can help organize and get some community feed forward. So it's good to hear from her and talk to her about certain things that we're facing here, and what are we hearing as our constituents are talking to us. And I think that is all.
Thank you.
Three more weeks to spring break.
What was that, three more weeks?
Three more weeks to spring break.
So, so thank you, Counselor. For me, I have just a couple of things, and I'll touch on them again on, I'll touch on one of them again on Wednesday. The If It Were America contest, entries need to be in by Friday. I know that Calipulio Middle School said they had 78 kids writing essays. Have any been turned in, Matt, at all? I'll get, I'll catch him with him later. So please get your kids' entries in, let your kids get their entries in, and so I can get started reading them. Also, we're, are we supposed to see some results of the retreat that we have with the council?
Yes, you will.
Is there a timeline on that?
I don't know. Kayla's coming forward to address it.
Oh, there she is.
Yes, I just checked in with Sarah Singer-Wilson today, so she's putting together some graphics from that, and we should get those in about mid-March. She's got to a whole bunch of groups at the same time that do strategic planning, so it is coming your way.
Okay, thank you. And then, why'd they put Outlook on here? Oh, never mind. Other than that, I will now turn to the city manager.
And the only, thank you, Mr. Baird. And the only other thing is, you heard about Library Uncourt this evening. I just wanted to remind you and anybody who's listening or watching that it's this Saturday is the 1st of March. So it's coming up very quick. It's a great event. It's a primary fundraiser for the Friends of the Library, and if you can attend, please do. The tickets are on sale at each of the libraries.
Thank you. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 5:53 PM. Thank you all for being here today. I greatly appreciate your time and attention.